A regular council meeting of May 26, 2016. Thank you all for being here this evening. I spoke with Mr. Manning earlier this week. I think he had requested to, or asked me if he could do the invocation placement flag, and so I will oblige. If everyone would please stand for invocation placement.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord. Thank you for the beautiful day you gave us today, Father. God watch over each and every one here tonight, Father. His mercy is good for this city, Father. God, the men of the more that they serve as warriors, pack it out. Father, Lord, we thank you for our country, Lord, for our men and women waiting for your pardon. Bless us. Each one here, we do what you have us to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our place of flag.
Our place of allegiance, sanctified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ted, prepare the roll call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Councilmember Grabett.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Mayne.
Here.
Councilmember Sewell.
Here.
And from City Manager Williams.
Here.
City Attorney.
I trust everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes, or review the items in the consent agenda, which include minutes for the May 12 call meetings, the May 12 agenda work session, the May 12 regular council meeting, and then also the April 26 financial report. Make a motion, broom.
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayne.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. This time we will entertain communication from citizens who are a resident of City East Ridge or a business owner here in the city, and you have any comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council. This would be your opportunity to do so. If you would approach one of the two microphones here at the front of the room, state your name and address for the record, you'll have five minutes. And there is, I think we have two public hearings later, and so if you're here for either of the rezoning cases, if you wouldn't mind waiting to the public hearing, there will be plenty of opportunity for public comment at that time. But if you have any other comment or question. Yes, sir. This is Mr. Ted Boyd coming forward, and we spoke just a minute ago, and...
No, you don't have to. It's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to come and personally thank the mayor and the city councilman for the support that you offered in the discussions about the cell tower and the reconstruction of the stadium. I can't stress to you guys how important it was for y'all to stand behind me on this resolution, even though in the end we didn't need it. It's kind of unwritten rule for the commissioners. Whatever the commissioner wants in that district, he's eyes and ears of the citizens of that district. We stand behind each other in supporting what those communities want. And in my case, having East Ridge and the city of Chattanooga, that's my entire district, is critical to have your voice and be a part of an initiative like this. And I just wanted to stand here and publicly thank you for your support in that discussion. We've got the stadium fully funded with the school board coming forth with $913,000 not only to fund Raymond James Stadium reconstruction, but several other stadiums in other parts of the community. I am confident without your support that, and David Teschman, our District Eight school board member, he was 150 percent behind us on this. Without all the community input, the Alumni Association, certainly all the letters and input, I don't know that we would have come to this conclusion. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much, each and every one of you.
Thank you. We appreciate you, and, you know, there are a few issues that I've seen that have unified a community quite like the stadium issue has here in East Ridge, and you have generations, literally generations of individuals who either have roots here at East Ridge or still are present here at East Ridge who have stepped up and said, "We want to see something positive happen out of this situation." And I think, you know, I think ultimately the end result that has been achieved was achieved because of that united support.
Absolutely. I agree 100 percent, and with the momentum that the stadium is, things are going well and it's going, I'm here to help this city council in any way I can to keep the momentum going. I'm looking forward to meeting the new city manager, and the opportunities and the transformation that's going to happen in East Ridge in the next few years is remarkable, and I'm just glad that I've been long enough to be around to see it. Thanks again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for...
Before you sit down, I ask you a question. Oh, the club, how much did the money that the club raised?
Alumni Association? I'm not here to represent the Alumni Association.
How much did they get?
The last count, I believe, was $8,300, maybe $10,000 in their account. With, the thing that's good about the Alumni Association certainly now is they received the 501(c)(3) certification within the last month. That's certainly going to help with fundraising, no question about that. I think the enthusiasm that the community and the business owners are going to continue to have will increase their coffers significantly in the next nine months. And they're going to stand with us. Their vision and mission was to establish an Alumni Association to help East Ridge High School, and that's what they're going to do. Now that we got the stadium built, there's a lot more work that we can look at. We got new restrooms, we got neat new concessions, we need a field house out there in front of the stadium. There's, you know, those are significant capital costs, and over the next few years, I think the Alumni Association is going to be right there hand in hand with the city, and certainly this commissioner, as long as I'm in office, is going to do everything I can to help too. Thank you, guys.
Okay, on the stadium, are they going to put a press box at the top, like, for that?
Well, I'm not going to speak for Justin Witt, who is the administrator of the Centers for Education. I can tell you that all of the stadiums that I have seen, stood before me, have a press box at the 50-yard line on top of the stadium. I would expect that. In fact, the last conversation I had with the chairman of the Board of Education was that if we can emulate the stadium at Signal Mountain, that's, I think that would be pretty adequate for us. If we, what the Alumni Association has shared with me is they would like a larger, more substantial press box than what Signal Mountain has. If they want to move toward funding something to that effect, I'm sure that Martin May Scott won't refuse their money. But a lot of good things.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it, and if anything we can do to help in the process, we will be more than happy to do.
Appreciate it, I'm with you. Thanks a lot.
All right. Okay, you, sir. Do we have another? I didn't see one, so I will ask Mr. Martin to come forward for just a moment. So we have some folks here from, I believe, the Corvette Club, is that correct?
Yeah, Shabby Craig talking on that. You can talk about that. We should have that.
Last year, the Corvette Club, first Saturday in August, hosted the car show at the park, which was very successful. Now, I'll just let you tell how much money that you raised, and last year, the money went to the Need a Child Fund. This year, they're cutting the number of people, the charities, and it'll be less charities, so our Need a Child Fund will get more, which we need because of the fact that Christmas Nights of Life is not coming back, and that being our biggest supplier of the money. We need people to step forward on this, so keep going.
Okay. We had a very successful show last year. We did have three charities. We donated $2,700. With your support last year, they used the arena. This year, we hope to raise a lot more money, and we are down to two charities instead of three, so obviously, the money, more money, would go to the Need a Child Fund. And we're requesting your permission to use the arena again this year on August 6.
And that is more money than we would have rented the arena for, the charity they gave at the Need a Child Fund.
And I'm assuming August 6th is a good day for us?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The two factors involved in the Otters Club show, which gives money to us as well as in their show, is the fact that they're during the time that they pick dates that we ordinarily had open dates on, so that really makes it better for us there. Yes, sir.
Well, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm not confused.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. And if we could, roll call, please.
I have a couple of questions first.
Yes, sir.
All right. This is for, they're asking for no rental fee, rental fee to be waived, is that what it is?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what it is. Same thing we did last year.
Okay. Well, last year was last year, so, you know, I don't remember everything that transpired this past year. Who supplies security, guard service, all this stuff?
Same people always do. I mean, it doesn't change whether they're in the park or not. We have the same security, the same guard service, nothing changes.
Okay, who?
We didn't.
The city does?
Yes. Because, I mean, yeah, but like, whatever we got this weekend, it'd be, what I'm saying is it doesn't go up.
Okay, how much is it going to cost the city? Not only for, to waive the arena fee, but also in overtime or manpower, etc., how much?
We would not have any, we don't have any overtime with police officers. I reckon police officers handle our stuff. We don't need overtime for that.
So, I mean, I tend to disagree there, because if we're pulling police officers off the street to put them down there at Camp Jordan, there's going to have to be either some overtime somewhere, or we're going to have a lack of police officers controlling the streets. One of those two is going to have to happen.
No, sir, we have a part-time police officer, John Spang, who was hired, and he works for...
Chief, you want to come up and address this?
For the city of East Ridge, and he works part-time, and he works events for us out there, but we do not pull people off the street to come down there. If they need extra security, they pay our city for the extra security.
Chief?
As Mr. Martin correct, on events like this, and like the J-Fest, which was last weekend with, I don't know how many members it was, the only expense for security at that event is the salary that Officer Spang gets every week anyway. Everything else is supplemented either with reserves, who work for nothing, or there were two positions down there that the people at J-Ware through paid those officers directly to provide security.
So there's no expenses to the city?
No, sir.
Other than the fee for the arena?
That's it.
And whatever utilities are incurred, etc., okay.
How about overtime for the part person?
Which should be the overtime for the part person now for a bit like that. They're not there. How long are you there?
We're there nine to three.
Yeah, it's real short there.
We get there a little early to set up, and we take it down pretty quickly. Will you clean up or will you?
I'd say it's the same deal that we do for the Otters Club with your show.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayne.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
It was a pleasure.
All right, this time, we will take the attention from council members. Ms. May.
This time, sorry.
Mr. Sewell.
One thing I would say, that you're going to...
Right. We will have a memorial play service at 1:00 in front of your frontier playground, close to the Blue Star Memorial sign, so if anyone would be coming up, we'd certainly appreciate you. Mr. Sewell?
Looks like my head was attended the call, didn't have a call or something, had a good turnout, they raised $1,000. But, you know, they're coming along with like, town halls, men's club, but they don't have to be there or something. They're supposed to get some money, I find that would be one of the reasons.
It makes a big difference. The patients become tax dependent. Mr. Cagle?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things. June 4th, Otters Club, we had the fishing row yard for all kids, everything's free, food, fishing rods, pork rinds, and also the Otters Club had a turnout for the barbecue, so we'd like to thank the city for the use of the park plan. And also, I'd like to ask someone a question about our mail service. What is the procedure for the council receiving mail inside the city hall?
Councilman, I would send the mail as a receipt and see how that goes to your box back there.
All right, who is responsible for that?
Whoever works the front desk at the time that's in the mail, as far as distributing the mail. I assume it's the same person?
No, sir, I distribute it to the manager. Yes, sir. And mail for the council members are put in their boxes. Some envelopes are stamped on the outside. We stamp all mail when it comes in, except magazines. We do, the only mail that I open for council is the mayor's, because most of that is coming in scrawls, and so we open it at that. But other than that, we just put it in your mailboxes.
All right. My other question. Wednesday, I was asked if I got a letter in my mailbox, but I didn't get a letter. And I let alone called around, I talked to Mr. Sewell. Sunday night, he went in there, picked up a letter out of his mailbox, and I asked him if it was a service stuff, so he didn't remember what it was about, and then he said, "I had one in my box." But Tuesday night, when I come in and picked up this package and the rest of my mail, there was no letter in my mailbox, so I've been wondering what has happened to the letter who has come in and took it out, and understand that. Do you know about the letter that I'm talking about?
I got one.
All right.
It's where the council and the city attorney, I believe, we all got one, did we not?
No, the city attorney did not.
So where is mine?
You never did get one? There was letters that went to several employees of the city.
You may have not got one, Larry thought he seen one, or Councilman Sewell thought he seen one either of us. I don't remember, I don't remember who had one and who did not have one. I can verify I received, as far as your mail, I cannot verify that it was put in your box.
I didn't see one either. I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure what we were talking about. I don't recall any letter that would be out there.
I'd be more than happy to show you a copy of my letter. I'd like to see it. But according to Mr. Sewell, there was one in my box because the segment building that is his building, and that was Sunday night. So that must be put in Friday evening, or something like Friday, so I'd like to know who's got access to our mailboxes and what's happening to our letter.
There's a lot of access to city hall. If we want to have secure mailboxes, then I would suggest that the council look at having secure mailboxes, that although you have keys to those mailboxes, and you can open them, with the amount of keys that are floating around, those are open boxes. Anyone can take anything out of your box at any time.
Well, I'd like someone to watch in our mailboxes, see how they do get secured. I would like to see a copy of the letter.
I've been trying to say.
All right. Thank you.
Would you like for us to, if you get mail, to send you an email and notify you that there's something in my box?
Well, there never has been a problem until now.
It's over this one letter.
That's right. That is the same thing that walked down Farmer's Avenue, opened my mailbox, and reached in there and grabbed my mail out of my mailbox on Farmer's Avenue. That mailbox might be in my personal mailbox, correct?
I don't disagree with you one way, counsel.
So there's not supposed to be nobody back there reaching their hand in my mailbox?
Nobody's going to tell you if they get your mail out of your mailbox, I'm sure. You know, what I would suggest, the only other way if that mail was coming in and there's a way that it's taken care of, is that the council, the mayor, city attorney, whoever else has a box there, it'd be a secure box, with you only being the one having a key to it. Or we can even put half, half a box on them, and then you only don't have your own box. If that's, you know, which I would probably have Byron start on that first thing, you know, Paul.
I just told, I called Mr. Sewell, he said, "I had the segment building in my box" that he had in his box, Sunday night. I don't know what time it was, he was there?
I'll bring everybody up to speed after council meeting, who was eleven. I'll let everybody, I'll make copies up in front of you. Everybody have a copy of it. You said you did not receive one, is that right? How was that, I received the letter? When I opened mine, I immediately notified the city attorney of it.
And everybody did, the attorney?
And basically, all this is, is a letter...
Mark, you had one in there, and I opened it too.
Jackie called me Tuesday afternoon, and I was, 10 minutes after he called me, I was up here, there was no one.
You had one, so...
Tuesday night. I believe you that it was there, it was actually solved.
That came in, I stamped them, I can tell you, everybody's got one, and I put it in their boxes.
It might have been the person that wrote the letter, and I got scared because I didn't look at it.
Well, the person didn't put the name on the letter, so there's no identification of that, there's no return address, there was no information such file. It basically was a letter slamming certain employees of the city from an unknown source. So that's basically signed it up. Is that not the right question, or is there a question I can give you?
I feel left out today, Mr. Sewell.
I do feel one, even.
Your name wasn't included.
But you can't get into that office, because I understand without a key fob, so it's not like I could walk in and off the street, is it?
The front, the front door is unlocked.
All the way around?
Well, they would have to jump the counter, because we locked, I mean, that one's locked.
All right, well, I look forward to finally getting what this is about.
Whatever you really want.
All right. Do we have anything?
No, sir, about the time.
Mr. Cagle?
I have nothing.
And talk about what I wanted to talk about in the committee session, so I'm good.
I have a few things. I have a few things. Boss Member Grabett asked, I believe, the last council meeting, to see if a resident of Scott Loham Radio is in.
Yes.
I have provided that information here, and you'll find that.
Yeah, I got it. I'll be at the garden. Okay. Thank you.
That should address that. Councilman Sewell asked about the listed tables at the podium next to the playground. I think Mr. Martin, you moved those for a special podium or something?
No, sir, no, sir. Byron's in charge of that, I found out from Shauna, Byron's in charge of that area, and Byron took and threw those two tables away because he said they were tore all to pieces.
Okay.
And he cleans that area and takes care of that area over there, it doesn't have anything to do with parks and rec, but I don't mind taking it over if somebody wants to be taken.
I don't understand why he didn't tell somebody that it's over with.
I'd like to ask Mr. Ray that.
Webber, those tables tore up during the, with the tree fell in toward the pavilion that?
I have no idea. I don't think so, because Byron Ray told me they were just tore up.
I don't recall any of Mr. Bean, any tables during that storm.
I think it's like, we don't call them by that time.
They don't ever go.
If any damage has been, band-助, we've had some band-助 over that area, I think that's been a rest. I don't know, I'll be a little happy to pass it on, my own, my own.
I remember that nail that fell in there, it then popped and through the pavilion, popped which way.
That's possible, that might be what...
It was a good size, was it?
The, only, talking about finger tables and such, well, we received four park benches in, on the, was that a grant? No smoking?
No smoking, yeah.
Davis hasn't, we can't wait for the mayor, no smoking initially. Four beaches, and we have signs that we can put up too.
Yeah, I'm guessing, the beaches have signs made into them, like I said, there's four of them. I think it'd be fair to leave it up to you, where you would like those, those type of beaches to get. I kind of kicked it around, give it out to Mr. Martin, I can't take a measure too fast, I'll figure it back to you. The next thing was the Mayor Lambert, we have an ordinance, asked about it, we have an ordinance on drainage pools. We contacted the Bradham County Water Quality, and he said that they do allow drainage pools as long as there's no chlorine in it. I don't know of any pools that are drained that don't have chlorine in them. If that happens, he said to notify Hammond County Water Quality during that process, when they see that happening, and they'll come out and take action on it. They can test it, take action on that. Mayor Lambert also, about the, talked to Kenny last week about the extended state homeowners owners. Said he might have pressed that.
Right, we attempted to, and we talked about having a meeting with some of the owners, and we tried to set something up, and we thought we had a date, and then the owners couldn't meet, and so what we're hoping to do at this point is, I talked to Kenny earlier today, and if it's agreeable to council, what we'd like to do is have, invite all of the extended state hotel owners to come here at 5:30 or so before our next meeting, or maybe just have them have the agenda set. Anyway, invite them here during meeting time, and just have some discussion about the ordinance. And, you know, I think it's been kicked around that maybe, maybe we remove the grandfather status, maybe we phase that in over a year, or two years, or whatever, and so I think it would be good to have some of those conversations. And I think, from what I've seen, I think council members, certain council members would like to see that as well. So, so that's, again, that's the plan, tentatively. If anyone has a, has just a lot of heartburn over that, let me know, and we'll try to figure out something.
Sounds good, we have time to figure that out.
Yes, that would be, certainly when we arrive at that point in the agenda tonight, I would ask that we table that. Do you have any more? We'll just get there with the regular course of events. Thank you, appreciate you. All right, and I had also asked, it's on the, it's on the agenda, we'll talk about it later as well, so. Do you have anything else? Okay. With that, we will move to whole business. Specifically, our public... And specifically our public hearing on ordinance number one thousand eight. Having properly advertised and affected parties notified of the potential change in zoning, I would like to open this public hearing on ordinance number one thousand eight. And, uh, Mr. North, if you wouldn't mind reading the caption of that ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend zoning regulations in the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to rezone the property located on Camp Jordan Parkway from R one residential district to C one tourism commercial district here on second final reading.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this, this particular issue? It has, I will say this, just to give a little backstory. It, it has gone in front of the, the planning commission, uh, it has, uh, there's a pretty extensive discussion about it there. The, the area that we're talking about is a, a certain parcel that had been donated to the City of East Ridge some years ago, and the city then sold it to the exit one developers. There is a fraction of that property that is actually usable, uh, potentially for, um, parking lot space. It's about all you can do with floodway. Uh, you can't really construct a building on it. And so, but in order to have the parking lot, the rezoning is, is necessary. It's also my understanding that, uh, permits are being applied for through the Army Corps of Engineers, and those permits have not come back yet. Uh, ultimately, that doesn't necessarily affect the zoning. I mean, if they can't get the permits to do what they want to do, then it doesn't matter if it's R one or C one or whatever it might be. So, so really, that is going to tell the tale on, on what happens to this particular piece of property, is, is whether the permits come through. Do you think we're going to table this? I don't, I don't think so, again, I don't think, I don't think the zoning is going to have any impact whatsoever. Not, not yet, I just wanted to provide a little backstory, so everyone knows how we arrived at this point.
Well, since the, the chapter of the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission case report was handed out, reading, and that entire site is in the floodway or the hundred-year flood zone. The northern three-quarters of the sit site in the floodway and remaining acreage, uh, sits in the hundred-year flood zone. Now, down here in plans, policies and regulations, East Ridge zoning regulation, Article five, section two, oh, oh, two states, no fill, no structure, belt, manufacturer homes, improvement of, or substantial improvement, that would result in any increase in floodway elevations shall be permitted within the floodway district. So if they're going to put a parking lot, how are they going to put it without filling?
And that's, I'm sorry, and that's, and that is, uh, that is really the crux of the issue. There's only, it said the northern three-quarters of the site sits in the floodway, and that's not, that's not fillable. So they can't, they can't come in and attempt to fill that. The flood zone, there's like a portion of the property that is in the flood zone that is fillable, and that is where essentially the parking lot could be. But floodway is, for all intents and purposes, useless. Unless, unless there is, you could actually do a retention pond, I believe, on floodway, but that would be about all.
But, uh, let me say this, Mary said what you do at the council, I agree, if we don't make, put in a retention pond there, that's going to put more water in the park, that's going to put more water on all the houses, parks, that's around, too, if we don't put in a retention pond.
Well, if, if that is the, that is what they're dealing with, with the Army Corps right now. The permitting for what, what can be done and what, uh, what the Army Corps will allow. Again, for city purposes, if it's R one, if it's C one, it, it really doesn't matter if they can't fill the floodway. They can fill the flood zone, uh, which is again a, a fraction of that, that property. Uh, and again, it would have parking lot or whatever right there.
I did have a discussion with, with FEMA, and they've changed their, any of y'all are fit to kind of take out more policies, you go read the government, they've changed the policy now, they pay for your personal effects and you'll pay to fix your house. Nobody has said that you might have, they won't pay to fix that. We got a pledge this last time, I've been doing one of them, and they said no. Your personal effects, they'll pay for it, for fixing the house, and that will fix it.
And that may be a, I do know that they have tightened things up on structures that have flooded previously, and so it could be that, when you look at the history of, of a certain property that's flooded two or three times, they, they're kind of drawing a line, saying we're not going to continue to, to pay for this structure that is going to flood every five years. And I think that's, I, I, I think that's where that's coming from.
Well, I had five inspectors come up from different states, and they sent, and I found out something, I've been on the schedule for a call line, I found out something I didn't, didn't know, they give specification, I found that, but water does not cause erosion. No water don't move dirt out of any, take your house, but, I asked what caused it, he didn't know except that water wouldn't. But then where did the dirt go? Well, they buy enough stuff because your house is falling down, dropping.
Well, I think, I think running water would, would certainly cause erosion.
And they said it don't.
Well, that would be a, interesting.
We've been having some hot discussions though.
I bet.
But I got the last remark, get out of the earth, they will pay for, nobody property in that subdivision here, subdivision displayed, no property.
And again, that could be based on.
Containment, that's it.
And again, that could be based on prior history, uh, fortunately.
Prior history is that they take the policy.
Are they going to do a plan like they did before we buy up properties?
They do still offer that, we're continuing to apply for that, it's, uh, I think part of the, uh...
Community development block grant.
Yes, CDVG, right, is that correct? Yes. I can never remember if it's CDVG or CBDG, anyway, uh, but yes, block grant is an easy way of saying it. But, uh, we, we've applied for and received actually several times.
One.
Uh, no, I think we've, we're continuing to, to get funds, uh, or at least we have, to be able to buy several homes, uh, in the Spring Creek Road area.
Yeah, Wellworth and Witworth Avenue, um, and Harvard Street, uh, we did apply for, um, Swope, which is another hard-hit area, but we haven't heard anything back yet, so.
And, and these are streets that, that flood over and over again.
After that, this question, and I'm rocking, after this question, I've been, you're going to fix the house, come in and raise it up by the house, uh, after I got, they were didn't raise it out. The other issue was, uh, our subdivision wasn't big enough for them to pay for it. I paid young my premium, two hundred fifty a year, to thirty-five million dollars a year now.
And it's expensive, flood insurance is expensive, I've got it myself, so I, I understand.
No one coming from.
I understand. All right, uh, and yet again, I think in terms of how, how this property is owned, you know, if, if, if it's R one or C one, whatever it is, if they can't get permits, nothing's happened, period. And, uh, and so they're, they're, I won't say in a fight with the, the Army Corps, but they're struggling right now with the, the Army Corps, so, you know, again, this could all be a moot point, but there's, you know, it's, it, nothing can happen. And it wouldn't matter what permitting is if, if the zoning doesn't change, so. So that's really why they're, they're asking for it to be rezoned, in the event that they can get permitting or not. Could they use a, a small portion of the property for parking lot?
And they also stated that a small portion of parking lot, if they could rent the property, they could build a structure back there.
If it's, if it's flood zone, technically they, it would be possible to build on it after filling it. But it, it would be, it would have to be very creative, in, in conjunction with the other parcel, uh, joints.
That, only now say that, that's a same way, that, that there's.
Oh, sure, sure.
Get dropped out there.
Sure, and, uh, that'd be not, that area itself, that, you know, a little, little further removed, but still, we're, you know, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of fill going in at a flood zone two, two doors away from me, so, you know, it's, uh...
We should make sure, but of course, I have to leave now, wish more towards just right now. Lots of people do it down, while it was covered.
And again, I mean, theoretically, the, the Army Corps looks at that, and, and Hamilton County does as well. If they deem that anything you're doing in a flood zone is going to push water out on someone else, then they're going to say no. They're not going to allow a permitting. So, with all of that said, do we, do we have, uh, do we have anyone who, who would like to speak on the issue? If, if, uh, if we do, we have a couple of lines here at the front, certainly you're welcome to speak. I see none. And with that, uh, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and consider the, consider the ordinance.
I'll stop her.
Second. We have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
That's me, Greg.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. Uh, ordinance number one thousand nine, item C, here for second final reading.
An ordinance admitting orders of time twenty-two, whose previously amended East Ridge zoning ordinance, specifically regarding Article six, sections one fifteen point three, minimum hotel and extended stay hotel requirements and standards. Some sections E and J, section one fifteen point four, minimum motel requirements. Some section H, by additional, adding additional section one fifteen point five, that was referred to by the hotel, extended stay hotel or motel regulations, here on second final reading.
This is the ordinance that we referenced earlier, uh, the extended stay, and so I would request that, if council sees fit, to be tabled.
I would like a motion to table this, till we get the hotels, every hotel that's interested in this, needs to be.
Right, and, and I told Kenny today, I said, I said, you know, if, if nothing else, if we have none of them show up, we, we need to invite it.
Why couldn't they?
But, yeah, I mean, we, we're, we have to at least offer them the opportunity to, to see it and have the discussion. If they don't want to have the discussion, then I think we, we move on.
There, there's two things in that, that I would like to, whenever they come forward, you know, you said there's a difference between a hundred and twenty days and a hundred and eighty days. I'd like to get in order of the hundred and twenty, you're discussing with them.
Mm-hmm.
And also, Larry Brown, I think about two years rest period to get them to come in, the ones that commit grandfather. They all come to regret, if they can come in soon, let's get it all in soon, the better.
No, that's.
We're starting forcing.
I think that's, that's a very good, yeah, very good idea.
I've done a lot of reading on this.
And I, you know, I've, I've talked to some, some folks in the community and everybody that, basically everybody I've talked to have said, they've read, they've said a hundred and twenty days, that's why.
No.
And so, I, um, so that's, that's probably something I would support as well.
You're not going to bring down the sixty, that sixty days or ninety, whatever. I would make a motion that we get all hotels in, discuss this.
But table it for now.
Table it, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion in second to table it, uh, and, and make sure that we invite the affected hotel owners, invite them in for a discussion next time. We've had the roll call, please.
That's me, Greg.
Yes.
That's me, for Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. And item D, ordinance number ten ten.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number nine eighty-nine, entitled, the ordinance to provide revenue to the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, fiscal year July first, two thousand fifteen, to June thirty, two thousand sixteen, upgrading the same to the payment of expenses of municipal government, by changing the revenue to the general fund, grant fund, and drug fund, and by changing expenditures of the general fund, grant fund, DOJ federal forfeiture fund, and drug fund, here on second final reading.
I do want to point out that this, on first reading, uh, we had a typo that was misnumbered and, and read into the record as ordinance number one thousand six. So I would like to make that correction now, that it is ordinance number ten ten rather than ten of six.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for staff. Has any of the actual, uh, dollar numbers changed from when this was voted on the first time?
Yes.
And what are they implying?
Okay, uh, we increased the revenues, well, on the, uh, building permits, because we've actually collected a hundred and forty-three thousand. We're going ahead and we're increasing in the additional amount. And then we went in and, in garage and transfer station, we have had the diesel pump, uh, is having issues, it is actually starting to seep diesel around the pump and the hose, we are going to have to get it fixed in a very timely manner because of the issues it is seeping into the ground. And so it could cost up to, you know, five thousand dollars, we're not sure if they're going to have to get into it and look at it.
Well, can I ask you a question, and, uh, apologize for stopping, for interrupting you, but, I mean, would it be cost-effective for us to do that or something similar to what we did with gasoline, just enter into an agreement with one of the markets here?
I might be able to, 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 yeah, that's an issue we had, it's good, it's bad.
Typically, we want to get the fuels up there now, we get a better quality of decent fuel, uh, we'll get it cheaper than what we can pay for with the pumps.
Okay, I just want to make sure if it was out of the bag.
With what we're running, any type of vehicle, that, that, I don't think we've had any issues out of our engines, uh, not all, which is what we're going to do with this, uh...
Okay, sorry, twice.
There is an exception with, with that, it's not fuel related.
What did one of them have?
Uh, Diane.
Yes, sir.
Is this the pump or the dispenser? The pump is inside that big old Titan set up there, the dispenser's the one sitting down on the ground.
It's, uh, looking at the suction pump, single hose.
It's the one on the ground.
Yes, sir.
It's one.
The one that's like second seat.
It's actually, that's actually the one above there.
Yeah.
It's over by the sanitation bill, that's the only tank that we still use.
I understand that, but the pump is inside the above-ground tank, but dispenser's sitting on the ground.
That's correct.
So the, uh, that's how I believe it's best, dispensers, they weren't near us for five thousand dollars, and, uh, and that messes with.
Yeah, well, this is a, a, just an estimate from Estes, uh, it's looking at new suction pump, it's, uh, a Wainbury line suction pump, single hose, single product, diesel hose, nozzle, swivel, breakaway, installation, purge and calibrate. They'll be doing all of that, too. Like, uh, like I said, it's the issue that it's seeping, you know, that that's definitely.
Who, who are using this button?
Ever been able to see that it has decent, uh, it has decent, uh... Every vehicle that says that has diesel, has diesel combustion. I don't think from the street department, sanitation, I don't think it's sanitation problem, I think they're on gas now.
Sanitation probably is it.
Yeah, they're on, sanitation is diesel. It's sanitation, fire department, the charge.
You've got backup equipment from street department, you've got front end loaders. There's one good thing you said.
I'm just trying to figure out.
So. I agree, we can buy gas cheaper, I mean, diesel cheaper, the way we're doing it is better quality.
Okay, do we have, we have a motion in regard to.
There are the, okay, the next one that we challenged is actually, it's the arena, the general purpose building. When the budget was done, their overtime was cut. Last year, they did over fifteen, they did almost fifteen thousand dollars in overtime. It was cut back to sixty-five hundred this year. They've had a lot of events that pushed their overtime, and this is pushing them so close to going over budget, that we're looking to increase that.
How much is that?
We're looking to increase twelve thousand dollars. The next one is.
Twelve thousand more dollars worth of overtime to pay cheap.
Well, actually, we have just finished May, if you hold on just a minute. They are in their busy season, they seem to have a lot of busy. They are writing out sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighty-nine cents in overtime. That's through the month of May.
That's the whole year.
Yes, sir. Like I said, their overtime budget was cut from almost, they spent almost fifteen, right over, I think, right at fifteen thousand last year, 2015 budget audited, and it was cut back to sixty-five hundred.
So that's sixty-five hundred plus.
One thousand, take it up to eighteen. Okay, next is in the community center. We were already doing it because we had two part-time employees that had, you know, they were offered for healthcare due to the legislation, and they took that. And then as I was, we were working on the salaries for the 2017 budget, we realized that one employee was not put into their budget. They were left out, so we are having to make sure we don't go over there. And the only other change is, is over, we added the drug fund because it looks like the drug dog is going to be ready to be picked up soon. Am I correct, assistant chief? And so we have to look at, we have to amend the budget to reflect paying for the dog.
That's Mr. Spock, that's the nomination.
Yes, sir, that's what you're, you'll see, there's a revenue and expenditure to offset that.
Or recently, we still talk about taking the two salaries out.
When we're doing the budget, yes, sir, we'll give you an option to look at on State Street Day, to pay them out of general fund and not use salaries on State Street Day to build it back up, because we've been depleting it for the projects. So that will be one of the options with the budget. But those were the changes that remained, too. Could I give you a couple of, the nuts I would like to add up, is that since we received most of our revenue from May, of course, we have closed by year, I wanted to let y'all know that we are actually at a hundred percent on collecting current property tax, and we still have another month to go. On our delinquent property tax, we are at a hundred and one percent. You know, we're good there. Also, I wanted to let y'all know that business licenses on our collections, we are up to a hundred and five percent on that. We have also been working aggressively with the state on delinquent business taxes. Ms. Reardon, who has been really working on that, and has been working with, making sure everybody has a license, she's talking to the state, she's sent out letters that the city attorney had approved, and we are definitely seeing where we're giving people in compliance with that. And Councilman Cagle, you asked last month about the police, the state law enforcement education grant, we got it last week, so we got it earlier. And I also wanted to let you know that on sanitation, we are at ninety-five percent as of today on their collection. So we're really, the revenues are coming in and everybody, I know it seems like we're, you know, a lot of things happen, but they're still coming in below on expenditures. But there were some areas, just there was not enough money going to do this past year. And we've had some things come up we didn't expect. We had to fix fences, we had a lot of damage, you know, insurance claims. Even though you get the money back, you cannot reflect that money back into that expenditure lineup. You're offsetting it with the revenue. So this is just to make sure that we come in at the end of the, end of the budget season, you know, and not go over budget.
Now, elaborate with it. When I was going through this, I got three items here that I marked wild.
Hang on, let me get mine.
Oh, it's not a question, I just want to congratulate the fact that our economic development, the building permit area went up to two hundred and fifty-seven percent.
Yeah.
Our other code, of course, which I'm not for sure what is, but says other code is a hundred and sixty-six percent, and our mechanical permits are three hundred and seventy-five percent. Those are actually my problems on that side. Drug station, our revenues.
They have been really busy.
Not sure we had a motion, so if we could add a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mary Lightfoot.
Yes. Next is item E, discussion of fire department establishing city ambulance service.
Chief, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm the one that asked for this about the ambulance service, and without drawing this out into a long discussion here in this meeting, after discussing it with Chief Williams, I'm not sure that the city is in a position to do this at this time. So, I certainly do appreciate the work that Chief Williams did, and paramedic or firefighter, whatever his title is, Drew Man Drews, and Kenny Custer did on it, but I'm not, I just don't think the city's in a position to take this on right now.
Okay, so we will, third objections, we will pull this item.
Yes.
Okay. So we will move to new business and another public hearing for a rezoning. Again, having been properly advertised and affected parties notified of the potential change, we will open the public hearing on ordinance number 1011, and Mr. North, do you mind reading the caption?
An ordinance of the City Council in the city of East Bridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the city of East Bridge, Tennessee. To rezone the property located at five oh one Notre Dame Avenue from R one residential district to O one office district, tax map one five seven oh dash P dash zero zero one, here on first reading.
And again, just to provide some background on this, this is a residential structure that was constructed, that's a residential structure. There's a small map in your packet that shows exactly where it is. Its location is actually, it's right on South Terrace, and if you look at the property to the west of this property, it's a church, and if you look to the east, there is another, what was a residential structure that has been rezoned also, and it is River City Marketing. So the RBA looked at this and said that it was, rezoning this would be consistent with other uses in that area.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If we were zoning this commercial, it would be a church that I have any sales.
It actually would not. They, the requested zoning is going to be O one office, so there would not be a, any opportunity to have retail or anything like that in there. The planning commission looked at this as well and made a few suggestions because of its proximity to other residences to the south of this property, and then also the church right next door. The planning commission asked that, and we passed, we approved the rezoning petition with three conditions, and we would like for the council to consider these. Item A is if they put a dumpster on the property, that they construct a six-foot wooden screen around it, so that the neighbors don't have to look at a dumpster. And item B, no additional structures can be built on the property. What is there now is what will be there. And then item C, and this is where it impacts the church specifically, is if there's a parking lot lighting, it'll be installed in such a way that it won't be invasive to neighboring properties. So again, the planning commission did approve this so that it could be moved to consideration by the city council. If there's anyone here who would like to speak in regard to this potential rezoning, this would be your opportunity to do so. Certainly, welcome to come to one of the two microphones here at the front of the room. I see none, so we will close this public hearing and move to consideration of ordinance 1011.
Motion to approve, ordinance number 1011.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. We have any questions? We have the roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mary Lightfoot.
Yes. We will move to item C, resolution 2566.
A resolution of the City Council in the city of East Bridge, Tennessee, approving the appointment of the county specialist to the position of assistant deputy city manager, and recognizing that the assistant deputy city manager shall assume the duties of the deputy city manager slash interim city manager in the event of an absence or by disability of the deputy city manager slash interim city manager.
And Chief Williams asked for this to be placed on here, and I would like to explain.
That's correct, Mayor, with the, me being out of town, before the new city manager will start, which is June 1st, I wanted to make sure that we had someone in my position or someone that would be in the position of the city manager during that time I was young, so I asked that this be put on here. I also asked that this person be Diane Carls, and the reason it be Diane Carls is, I think she has proven herself up here many, many times as our finance director, as well as other jobs that she's happened to assist with at this time, so I think she is more than qualified for this position.
Quick question, please.
Question.
Okay, I'll second for discussion. Okay, Mr.?
When you went out of town, Mr. Williams, hereby back regardless, we, I would just brought up that.
There's a difference between going out of town and out of country. I'll be going out of country, still phone call, now I'm gonna be on a phone call away, I'll be on a cruise, I have no access to phone or email or any notification.
According to this ordinance, it says the city manager designated Michaela Williams Fire Chief to be the deputy city manager pursuant to section five, which is city charter as approved in resolution 2485 on June 16, 2015. My reflection, the city manager at that time did not want you to enter city manager. Council today.
Thank you. From what I remember, the council also tried to do that, and the council could not do that because our city attorney spoke up and said according to charter, that the city manager at the time has to pick his deputy. So that's when he turned around and he picked me, and then the council threw it down.
Okay. But our city charter has not caused him for the deputy city manager to appoint another deputy assistant city, interim city manager.
I believe it has happened in the past, when Eddie Phillips was here and he was the acting interim city manager. Mr. Phillips appointed Frida Willer to be his assistant, to an assistant deputy city manager. And then when Mr. Phillips retired, she replaced him until a new city manager retired. Andrew Hyde.
Well, I have, I don't have anything against Mr. Carls, just hereby back with her the six thousand dollar over-year pay raise due to her being overworked in the job she's seeking. So this is just sort of a trip where four times her job she's in right now, so.
For four days, council, typically, the largest thing that's gonna happen right now is gonna be financial issues with who needs a signature. If there's a disaster, an interim city manager or a mayor can declare a city instead of the market, or something like that would happen. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the issue with it.
And you should keep saying four days, the city's gonna be closed. Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
That's correct, even though you're closed Saturday and Sunday, she's still a replacement to me. I'm off on Saturday, Sunday, but I'm still your interim city manager.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that, I mean, we're gonna have a new city manager coming in here in three days, and I know you said that it's only for four, for four days or something like that, but, but once we vote on this, that's it. That's it, it's not, it's, there's no language in here from this date to this day. So with a new city manager coming in here, I would just feel more comfortable in letting him appoint or approve, you know, whomever he wants to appoint to this decision. I just don't feel comfortable in doing that, this close to the new guy coming in.
Mr. Grabett, according to the charter, the city manager picks his deputy or his assistant. It does not necessarily have to be me, but once he comes in, he picks his deputy, that decision is brought before council for council approval. That's the way it's always been known in the past.
So he could, yeah, if you don't mind, Mr.?
This is section five H of the charter. In the temporary absence or disability of the city manager, the assistant city manager of such position be established or other officer designated by the city manager and approved by the council shall serve in this capacity.
So this is not a permanent position that you're establishing here?
No, sir.
I think it exists for as long as Mr. Williams.
It's far out of country until the city manager gets here, starts a journey, that's all there is. Even after that time, when the new city manager comes in, I will still be your deputy city manager until time that he either says, hey, Mike, I want you your deputy city manager until time that he either says, hey, Mike, I want you, it's time I pick a new guy or new person, and that's completely up to him. Then you have to bring that to council for council approval. If that changes. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct. Again, all approved, approved by the city council in five days. I was, I didn't prepare this ordinance, excuse me, resolution, but I would suggest if that's, if that's a concern, then if it's adopted and approved by the council, that designation is only for that specific period. So there's absolutely no misunderstanding.
As a law, if you go up to a, what you just said.
I don't have a resolution. I think this is.
So this is basically a, a copy of the resolution that was prepared when Eddie Phillips named Freda Wheeler.
Should we not have our attorney draw up another?
It, it.
That's been swan married.
Well, it does seem, I mean, it seems clear that assistant deputy city managers to assume the position of deputy city manager slash interim city manager until such time as the deputy city manager or interim city manager is able to return to the duties of the office or a new city manager is appointed by the city council. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, it's.
There's already deputy city manager appointed by the council.
You know, if, forgive me, if, if a tragedy occurs and.
I think it's something.
And something happens to, and something happens to Chief Williams. Yeah, well, and that's the thing, there's, there's no provision for that. There's, there's no provision that says, I step in and be the city manager. We, we don't have that. So if, I, if crazier things have happened, if a tragedy falls by, what happens if some sort of tragedy or circumstances impact Mr. Miller and he's not able to start on June 1st, we're up the creek.
And what about you?
Well, that's the thing, there's no provision. There's no provision for me.
We'll get, we'll get our attorney to draw up that case you got.
I would suggest that that's the wish of the council, we simply put a clause in the very end that says, but in no eventual such a form could be affected after May 31st, 2016, as I understand that the city manager is coming in on June 1st.
Basically, you gotta.
Somebody in a weird way.
I'll be back the fourth, worst case scenario, she does it three more days.
If you don't get. So I mean, that's. You could get by the same car that Mr. Miller would have to be getting.
You may not come in the first.
Well, I mean, it does say, it does say that until, again, until the interim city manager returns or a new city manager is appointed. So if Mr. Miller doesn't, for whatever reason, he's not able to start on June 1st, Chief Williams comes back and Chief Williams goes right back in, I mean, he resumes his duties, et cetera.
Might want you to take, so I'm not sure.
So I mean, that's, and that's, that's basically where we're at. It's, it's a matter of succession. It's why, it's why the, you know, we have a president, vice president, next in line, Speaker of the House, but you've got to, you've got to prepare for.
So we're voting hard to be in there till June 14th.
Right, no, it.
Something happens to Mr. Miller as well. Until, until such time as the deputy city manager, interim city manager is able to return to the duties of the office or a new city manager is appointed by the city council. Well, that's, I would, correct, because again, that's already happened.
We could certainly revise that. We could amend that to say until city manager actually starts, you know, I don't know how, how exactly, but when he starts his employment. But he's not getting paid yet. He's not getting paid yet, so he hasn't technically started his employment.
All right, can we put it in there? It's just a suggestion. Nothing against this court, but it's a. And, I think we put it in there. And the mayor.
Bill, you can't do that. It violates the law.
Thank you. I just called quick to, if you don't get.
I think what the mayor said, that was our issue, until the deputy city manager, interim city manager is able to return to the duties of the office or a new city manager begins employment.
Sounds good. You're not going to fire everybody while everybody else is gone, are you?
Hopefully, it will be very quiet. We will have no issues.
I'd like to add one question.
Everybody's going to be on their good behavior.
Add one more question, then y'all. How much is that for college?
I don't know. I heard somebody wants a huge pay increase for, for everybody. I wonder how much that's going to cost. That's a subject for another day.
Yeah, that's right, we'll have to.
I, I like the way the city attorney framed it.
I did tell you, I'm detecting how much it's going college.
I don't think, I don't think we should be, I don't think so at college.
Someone says about a.
I don't, I don't, councilman.
Well, that was, that was because she, you know, that, that, Mr. Cagle was referring to the.
That grant.
Right, the move that we made to, to pay her extra per month for as long as she's essentially doing the job of secretary. So that's, I think that's what Mr. Cagle was.
I mean, if you're going to money, it's not more than money.
Okay, if, Larry, I would draw my motion if you withdraw yours. And then, well, I'll drop, yeah, I'll drop the position. And if you will move to approve this resolution is.
Let me read the line. There it is. Again, as the deputy city manager, interim city manager is able to return to the duties of the office or a new city manager begins employment, let's say whichever first occurs. Whichever first occurs. If something happens, Mr. Miller can't start on the first, mine comes by.
I want motion that if it. Say it. Mr. Graven. Okay, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Graven.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Let me stay on that. That's going to be clear.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Labor.
Item D, the consent agenda for grants, this would include resolution 2567 regarding firehouse subs grant and then resolution 2568 regarding Edward Burn Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion, head second to approve. We have any questions?
This, the grant for police is going to be used either for training or purchasing equipment.
Believe that's correct.
It has nothing to do with the allowable course of the grant.
We may ask the chief to set that down.
Anyone, yeah, exactly, anyone that would like to speak to the Edward Burn Memorial Justice Assistant Grant?
Yes, sir, Mayor, that, the chiefs have decided to use that for tasers. I just choose language from the previous burn grant as far as what it says here. So it could be training if they decide, you know, halfway through, if they don't want to go for tasers, they could go for training for tasers too.
This is for more tasers.
Up to the amount, which is $11,084.
Has it nothing to do with the state? No, of course.
Do we have any other question?
I got one question for me to ask the chief.
Is this regarding the grant?
No, it's not, I guess, actually, now.
Is it regarding the grant?
Yeah, a big part of the grant, but if I'm using money for. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you would, I'm just asking a question. Oh, at least having time to do with our computers, finding, getting put in our cars.
No, sir. Windows, Dr. Grant, for that. The cars will, we, started the training this week, some train sets of officers so far, Captain Waddle, that's doing the training, he is anticipating rollout of his computers to offer us.
But when I asked you that question, I thought maybe I'd be able to use some of this money here, they have training.
We don't need the money for that. That, that's rolling on, it's just getting the training done.
Thank you, sir. I think that we're nowhere for the training.
Well, we, we have a motion to sit.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we're good. We have the roll call, please.
Here you come.
I was about to say hello, but here he is.
We're going out, I'll take a second.
This is the current consent agenda for the grant. We're about to have a roll call.
Councilmember Graven.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Labor.
Yes. Item E is discussion of adjusting the time for construction to take place in residential areas. Kenny Custer provided me with the current code on that and he and I, I think, are in agreement that if, if we enforce what we have already, that should be good enough. The current hours, and this is good information for anybody to have, if there's construction going on in your neighborhood, the allowable hours are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays. Can't come in on Sunday morning and start rolling in the bulldozers. So that, that has been an issue with projects that's going on currently. But again, those are the allowable construction hours in a residential area, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays. Especially if there is a, essentially an emergency, if there is a, a time consideration that could have catastrophic consequences for the development, the staff is able to make an exception to lengthen those hours. But again, that is essentially only in rare, critical cases.
We may also say something about cars. When we get this fire department down there, and then that's probably a lot, but I'm a victim of the get started on that, yes, we.
Well, it's, it's really just for construction projects. For the, for the fire, for the new fire station.
Yeah, new fire station.
And so I'm, I'm.
Okay with that.
I, I don't, I don't believe so. I think, I think it would, whatever project we have going on would fall within that. So I'm, again, I'm, I'm fine with, with current codes. And again, it's just a matter of if, if you're around a construction project that starts outside of those hours or at 6:30 on Sunday morning, call.
Maybe file a, file a complaint.
Call or email or. And that, that was really, that was really my concern. Because I know we've had some, some complaints in the town of, um, there. I know it shakes some windows and picture frames as well, a little further down the street.
Does the code department give out that ordinance to the people when they come in to get a building or need to start construction?
Yes.
It says part of the package, that's correct. Also, another area that we run into is if there's an emergency situation where you've got a water company or power company or some kind of tree company or city, city services that are all out and not doing some type of clearing, so you may run.
Right. If there's a water bank break, something like that, they can go out there and try to fix the, the break. To a point of the morning if they need to. But we, we had one of those, it's been a few years ago, we had a water bank break. It was unbelievable how many emails I got saying, what we all did with construction equipment out on the, on the road, it wasn't water company, it had nothing to do with the city of East Ridge.
Well, we're catching up.
And so again, I'm, I'm good with, with the way things are. Again, provided that we were diligent about enforcement of code. Item F, discussion of reinstating the housing board, I didn't know if the attorney, if you've got any information you'd like to share on this. Okay. I think we talked about it a little bit the last night. We just each need to have it appointed to this board.
I put mine on the highest.
Right. Do you have it asked for, Jim, with you?
Yes, sir.
You got credit so long.
Mr. Graven.
I do not have anyone at this time.
Good.
Now, there's a list of qualifications that they've asked for to be picked on this.
They know about, they know about carpentry, construction.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I said, I'm told that there will probably be a list of qualifications.
Three, I think three of the five have to have some kind of either construction background or a building, some, some aspect of building in their background. Mr. Cagle, did you have anyone?
No, I have, I have.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. And mine, mine will be Eddie Phillips.
Now, are they going to be staggered in years or just going to be year to year?
Think they are staggered. Let me take a look. I've got the code on that as well. The members shall have staggered terms with two having a term of one year, two having terms of two years, and one having a term of three years. The board members shall draw lots to determine their terms at the first meeting of the newly appointed board. It's a language you don't hear very often.
Our verbatim, that was over the upper.
We, we could probably provide that. No, I know, I know one has, I'm sure, we could, we could certainly provide that. So those who have been nominated are, were.
I can say that mine has a building experience, a building company also takes, house, building
Mine has experience with. Mine has experience with, uh, code enforcement, uh, building codes, also, so...
Mine also built houses, and that stuff too, and wire.
I can encourage the council to get this all, have it all reconstituted.
Good. And for, so, again, for those appointees who have been placed out there, we could have a motion and a second, and we could finish it up the next time.
I make a motion.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second, second. We have a second. And again, we could have a roll call on these, and then next time, we'll, we'll add. So, we... No, it's, uh, we're gonna, we're just gonna vote on, on the group. And, uh, any other issues we can deal with as we go forward. If any of them drops out or changes their mind, this will be on there. We can deal with that as we go. We have a roll call, please.
That's Mayor Grevin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Mayor Labor.
Yes. Yes, sir. Okay, sure. Uh, the last item on our agenda is something that Mr. Manning has to be placed on here, discussion of swings for small children in Jordan.
Mark, you got it?
I understand we have a couple of council members that do have their small grandchildren, great grandchildren. I did check at two of the companies that we've done business with. One was, uh, Playcore, which has an office in Fort Payne, Alabama, as well as here in Chattanooga. Roughly the price on that's going a little over five thousand dollars. That's what that's going to Fort Payne, Alabama, and picking it up and bringing it back and putting it up. Today, Playworld, uh, Beth Ramies sent me one, and it's gonna be around four thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. You're looking at the swings, at six swings. The only difference is, the one for Playcore, it's a little bit more expensive, has this new swing that the mayor can swing with his kids and, uh, at the same time, you and one of them can get in there together, Mr. Cagle or Mr. Mack or whatever, as far as that goes. So, basically, that's, that's, uh, the background that I've got on this.
Which one would you like to win? For the best, for the...
Well, you know, I hate to say it this way, the swings are swings. If you've got the baby tot swings, the baby tot swings where you sit in, and then, and then the strap swings are the strap swings. Uh, if you want to try this new swing out, uh, and I don't know how it goes over in East Ridge, I mean, it's, it's a thousand dollar swing itself, you know, and it makes it run up there. So, to me, swings are swings, and what we have over here, I think, is fine. And I was talking to one of the people yesterday, and the most popular swing we have over here is just a tire. I mean, it's, they love the tire, that's what the kids love, so, uh...
Not the big ones, not the little ones, you can't cover them all, they follow out.
Well, yeah, I understand, I understand. But, you know, we went a long time without a playground at parties. And then we put the one in, and I think it's been very popular.
I have people, but literally, I have people who do not live in East Ridge, they live in Old Water, East Brandon, or wherever, and they, they tell me all the time how often they come to... Playground, playground, we're in. Haven't suggested that, but...
Totally.
But really, I have a lot of folks who have said, that they, they just love it. It's, they wanna take their kids to a playground, that's where they go.
It's, it's very nice.
And that's a lot about why we did put swings in, too. Let me explain this. If you get to bigger swings, you have newborns, drug lords, that's not swinging babies. Only are the mayor's, they only have newborns swinging them.
I'm really happy to go. But Mr. Hart, thankfully, we're doing it too.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cagle.
Since your, uh, uh, budget had been amended, thirty-six thousand dollars this year, could we, uh, put this into next year's budget?
Oh, I, I, I definitely think, the same thing I said last time when I was up here, I don't think we need to spend another penny on that. I do have a question. No, I, no, and I don't think you could order me to get them in here before July. By the time you did all this, it wouldn't happen. You're, you're looking at next year, there's no way it happens this year. No way. And, and this is not, this is not a recommend, recommendation of mine. I mean, I've got the hit list out there and the things that we'd need, that I think we need. But when the council asks us to do something, and one time it came up in one of the council meetings, they were talking about a swimming pool, so it didn't cost us anything to do it. So, I've got plans for a swimming pool out there. And it never came up again, so they're still, they're behind the desk there. So, I mean, I, I just feel whatever y'all ask me to do, uh, we don't have swings. And, uh, budget-wise, you're exactly right, it's been amended two or three times. I was hoping, I was hoping, Ms. Quawles, that we could take the, uh, two sixty-five and some of those line items that, that I was saving money on and trying not to spend and just wait that it was all over, set and done, and I'll set it with that, then I wouldn't have to amend anything. But I think you said that you have to do that anyway, you have to amend it that way. I was, I was trying to get in under budget, do it that way.
When you get to a certain point, you're getting really close, it's best to, you may not use it, but it's better to amend it.
Sir.
I'd like to ask you to get the prices on the swings for the small kids, 'cause the time I was down there with the big kids, we tried to tear up the playground that you've got now. The thing that you stand on, you go back to the floor, it's already eaten, or they had those get up on it?
They have redesigned that. Uh, there was too much pressure, uh, the point was wrong on it. They took it back down and redesigned it, and then they sent them out to all of them nationwide that they had put in in the last two years. But you're exactly right, and, and I did ask one of the people yesterday. I said, "Well, these get torn up by the big kids." Talking mainly about the swing that the mom and the baby can get in at the same time. He said, "We build them for abuse." He said, "Because every playground will be abused." And he said, "We have them safe enough that, that somebody won't get hurt on them." But now, I'm gonna say this, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get Uncle Melvin to put in the mulch, and, and we'll have to put our own perimeter around there and fill that up. If we do it this way, we'll have to put them up. But I think Byron's very capable, and I stay open with that. This is what the council wants to do.
Mr. Cagle, it, it says for the small kids.
Yeah, they mentioned swings, they had those swings with the small kids.
I'd like to make a suggestion that this be included in next year's budget.
I'd be happy.
You will?
I'll say.
Okay, now, we could, we could make that, yeah, formal, formal motion.
Yes.
Yes, that's fine. And we have a motion and a second to add this into next year's budget. We have the roll call, please.
That's Mayor Grevin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Mayor Labor.
Yes. All right, and, uh, before we adjourn, Larry has something...
I should walk this up, which might not explain, uh, a bit of a problem I've had to him that, uh, police departments, uh, have cars, they, they don't, for instance, they don't have anything to drive. So, I don't know what we can do about it.
The house on the road, they can repair it.
Cook control? Well, I...
Yeah, I look like a little car here.
Chattanooga has bus control.
Looks like house car.
Hey, take miles off three hundred five.
Yes, sir.
Now, we have two spare cars. And they're being used, one of those spare cars being used by our two new officers that are going back and forth to the academy, and the other spare car is getting used. The cause we're, we're at a point with the, their Chevrolet's that they're getting their, one of them's getting repaired, the same way almost, we get buses. And I don't want Speaker G to read, I know that he has, he has some ideas for the next, but a lot of time. But we're keeping them going, but we are, we're spending money on, on, right, on our share of...
So, all the Chevrolet's will be a lot of problems?
Not all of them, but, but we've got seven that are out on the road. Uh, and I'm sorry, we have seven Chevrolet's, yeah. There's more than, that are doing very well, the rest of them are, will have any more.
Just gonna let, you know, let the council know, we're sure we got one. Okay. Thank you for that, and...
I know we voted one time, like, not a couple of years ago, every year, we buy, buy, police cars, each year, I like the ice blocks. What about the ice blocks?
Royal years, give them here.
Which kept the year, which kept the year, someone else looked at it.
You got those dogs?
Yeah.
Not long ago.
In the budget we're in right now, there were supposed to have been five cars purchased, but they were not put into the capital projects budget.
They didn't get purchased.
I don't know why.
Oh, they never did get funded?
They were not put, they were not, right. They were funded with the initial capital projects plan, but they were, it was like the paint machine, it was not put into the capital projects budget for two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, we built the door supplies, and they got took out and moved to... All right, well, thank you all for being here this evening, uh, have a, have a good save evening. We hope to see you one, one of our...